Good evening. I am Timothy Brianna from the League of Women Voters of Buffalo Niagara and delighted to be here again. There are two opening positions on the Wilson Central School Board Education for three-year terms each. The tradition of holding a candidate's forum for this election is long one for the League. The League of Women Voters is a nonartisan organization that encourages and informs in anti-participation of citizens in government. The League works to influence public policy through education and advocacy. Moderating the school board candidate meetings is one of the many functions. Membership is open to everyone. Students may join for free. Learn more about the League on our website, WBDN.org, or on Facebook. The ground rules for the candidate forum. Presentations should be strictly prefronted to issues, not personalities. The orders of the opening. Statements have been predetermined by the candidates throughout the position for the evening. This event will end at 7:00 PM. Wilson Central School District makes their only authorized ordinance of this event. This event to be live streamed in its entirety and recorded. And the link will be made available at the Wilson Central School District website. The link can also be available on the Wilson Central School District website. It may be broadcast in its entirety. Only licensed media, including TV, radio, and newspapers are entitled to air the portion of the recording. Even with the Federal Communications FCC regulations, all others who air this recording may do so only if in its integrity. No one is permitted to publicly display edited film footage in any manner. We request from the audience members to turn off their cell phones and if it's time, please keep them turned off during throughout the event. We also request that refrain from applause until the forum is complete. We seek to arrive at a candidate with the greatest amount of time to respond to questions. Format for tonight's forum. Janet Bibsel is our timekeeper. She will raise the green paddle when the speaker has one minute left. The yellow paddle when there's 15 seconds left, and the red paddle to complete your time. When the time expires, the candidates are expected to stop while completing the sentence being spoken at the time. Opening statement. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement. Our quotes and platform outlines are usually presented. Audience questions. Each candidate shall have two minutes to respond to each question. I will be asking questions submitted in advance, alternative with those submitted by members of the audience here. Today, Judy Huber will screen questions for vulgarity, profanity, appropriateness, and redundancy. The questions must be directed to all candidates. The students from the participation in government class will distribute and collect cards and pencils for use to write up. They will take the questions to Judy Huber. Questions will be asked of the candidates in rotating order. Closing statements. Each candidate shall have allowed two minutes for a closing statement to summarize throughout and reiterate points that were brought forth during the meeting. This forum is designed to be a dialogue between the audience and the candidates and is not a debate. I will announce each candidate's name only for the opening statement. I'll be happy to repeat any questions if you need me to, if it's your turn to respond. We can move to the next person to respond without making a reduction. We will move to the next candidate to the left to be the first person to answer the next question. I will use the candidates in reverse order for the concluding statements. Now, we will begin with opening statements from Christopher Carlin and then followed by the Zonda Hart.
Okay, thank you. My name is Chris Carlin and I'm on the Wilson School Board since 2011. I was appointed to an open seat at that time and since that time, I've run for reelection multiple times. So, I'm a Lakeview resident of Ransumville. Prior to, and growing up, I was actually living in Loopport, end of the district, so that's where I grew from. When in US Army, when I was just after graduation, came out, was hired by the Sheriff's Office, attended Niagara Community College. Served 26 years in law enforcement between Niagara County Sheriff's Office and the Niagara Falls Police Department. Upon retirement from those agencies, I then went and was hired by the US Federal Government Department of Labor motion, where I'm currently working. And throughout, again, while I was working, about three years active duty and 31 years, 30, 30 years of reserve time. So, with a tour, a tour. So, I enjoyed, I enjoyed my part in the Wilson School Board. We get some outstanding school board members who are working. We work together. I think we provide outstanding service for the school district. And, you know, I think there's nothing more I can say. Yeah, great staff, great administrators. And we make Wilson a great place because of the students we have here too. So, that's all for me. Thank you.
That's powerful. My name is Ben Saito-Hart. I go by that. Much easier. I'm here just mostly to support the public education. And I do have kids in the school district ranging from elementary school to the high school. And I also have a spouse that's a teacher and coach in the district. I did grow up in a little island where public school was not a thing. So, this is a big thing that I want my kids to realize and all students, it's a privilege that we have of public education. I did come from, we moved just into the school district two years ago. We did come from a bigger school district. My husband being here for so long, it was a second home. And it was very easy when we decided this wasn't the school district, but we needed something smaller. It was just to come to Wilson. So, I'm just so proud to be a part of this great school board because a lot of good things to say about it.
Thank you. The first question we're voting, Chris. What attributes or behaviors are essential for school board members?
I think the school board member, probably the strongest trait you can have is to listen to the leaders that are in place in your school district. We currently have outstanding superintendent, principals, staff. And you listen to the professionals that are in place there already. You get advice from that. And you have to trust what they're telling you.
I do agree with that. Just great leadership already in the school system. I think it's almost about being a support system for them and being a team player.
Beth, I'll ask you this question. What do you feel you can contribute as a member of the school board?
I am a nurse, so I'm just, I think I am a pretty good team player. Quick on my feet and then also being a voice for a parent that has the children pretty currently in the schools. Just being a voice for the rest of the parents and mostly those students.
Well, I look back at some good leadership attributes as far as my experience is concerned. Being administrator in law enforcement agencies and currently an administrator in the job I'm working in now. So, I think that those attributes definitely help me be on the school board. Again, I think I'm a good listener. I think if somebody tells me something, I'm open to hearing all sides of the topic, whether it's coming from a parent or it's coming from an administrator or a staff member at the school. Certainly open to hearing all sides to an issue.
This question for you, Chris. What is your educational philosophy?
My educational philosophy as far as, I guess, I think the public schools, I'm a strong believer in public school. I have the Public School Foundation. And the uniqueness of the Wilson Central School District is the fact that it's such a small school district and that staff and administrators know all the kids. And it's almost like a private school setting. So, I think as far as the involvement from our staff members with the kids, getting to them at a personal level, whether it's in the classroom or out in the sports field, I think that's a very great attribute that this school has for school.
Yeah, I definitely agree with that. I see it firsthand, having a spouse that works in the school district and is a coach. It is, we just live four houses down from the school. But it's amazing being all the kids always walking by and saying, "Hi, this is hard." And it's hard to find, I've been in other school districts, and it's hard to find schools that are that close knit. It's definitely a very tight community where everyone knows everyone. We particularly learn that. And all the kids know each other. It's great to go into elementary school and I'm always like, "Why is this hard?" And it's hard to be.
Okay. This is a question for you, Beth. What is a school board member's role and responsibility?
So, I did have to refer some of that when I first learned about the position and the seat open. But I know it's really just to be there for the superintendent. We support the superintendent. We've worked together as board to help make those decisions for the superintendent.
Chris, yes, I agree with that. Probably the best thing you can do is give an overview or kind of a 30,000-foot view of what's going on in the district, help with the guidance of policies and procedures. And again, trust their superintendent, trust their staff, and just listen to the professionals, please.
Thank you. Chris, here's a question. What does the role differ from the role of superintendent or administration? How does the role differ from the role of superintendent?
If I get this right, it's, well, the superintendent is the boss. He's the decision maker. Military terms above stocks with him, so to speak. And I think, again, we're fortunate enough to have a superintendent that ultimately takes responsibility of everything that goes on. So, he trusts his administrators. He's not afraid to challenge them when they need challenging. But overall, I think a good superintendent will trust those people that he has a place and support them as well as the staff members.
I agree. And also, his job is to, superintendent is to look for those administrators and their administrators. So, it's given the trust of that superintendent to bring the right administration into the school district.
Here's a question. What are some major issues that you believe our school district is currently facing?
I can't think of any major issues. I mean, the small thing, not small, but security was, that was something that they always questioned before. But they've been on top of that for a couple of years. They don't even question that anymore. So, I don't know.
Actually, you're right. I think the security is a very, very important part of what we are faced with. There's always been, I think we've done the best job we can possibly to, we're faced with practice. And that's always there for any, I think we've done the best job type of situation of security. And I think one of the biggest problems we face as a school board or as a district is probably budgetary. Not so much this year, but I think down the road, it could be some, there could be some serious cuts from state. And I was very impressed with how the legislators stepped up this time and actually put money back in the budget. Based on the proposed cuts from the government, we were facing some pretty, pretty serious cuts. But I think that the forecast is for next year is preparing for probably some deep cuts as well. So, that's one of the things that I think that we really have, you know.
Added to that question, how do you feel as a board member that you get the pull to understand what's going on in the legislative branch? So, it doesn't reflect poorly on board?
Well, I think it's getting the public, informing the public is always a challenge, I believe. It's getting people out there and trying to get the message across. I think whether it be social, social media, a combination of things, the messages to the parents, messages to the taxpayers. That we're facing this crisis in certain areas that trying to get their involvement. Sometimes it's a little too late that they finally step up. The, you see certain, certain community members there all the time. But it's to get everyone involved. And what brings, brings that to mind is the fact that, you know, what maybe 10 years ago, I guess, eight years ago, when I'd been close to Ransumville, the community came out closing that elementary school in that part of the district. So, we were able to generate a lot of community involvement, a lot of feedback from the community when it came to something like that. So, that is always going to be a challenge trying to get people involved in topics.
Thank you, Beth. What are your thoughts?
About same. I've had a few times that it's nice to have social media because it's a very quick way to get people the information they need. Otherwise, that is a challenge.
Beth, on this point, I'll go back to you on this question. We all understand information is not correct. It's almost false news. How as a school board member, would you relate to the public? Because you're led by the public to get the right things out to them.
You mean, like, what board members? I think I need to learn more points about that. I'm not sure.
Chris?
Yeah, again, I think that's good. It's a very difficult challenge, whether you do, yeah. I think face-to-face conversation with people, whether you show up at a sporting event, you show up at various events where the public is coming forward. We have things like the Christmas breakfast that that's a great forum. It's for the seniors, they bring a lot of seniors in and gives them the opportunity to see what we're doing here in the school district. Yeah, if there's false information, the best way you can do is attack that directly. One-on-one with people to discuss that and hopefully you can put an end to it. Small communities, while they're great, they also have a, that could be the downside because the falsehood going out there could get in a lot more traction than you'd really like to see.
Thank you so much. Here's a question for you, Chris. And in your past experience, you have worked with this in another position. Could you support a board decision you did not vote for in favor of? Why and why not?
Oh, absolutely. I think it's going back to what we were talking about before when Ransumville was on the chopping block. I was in strong support of keeping the school for the longest period of time. And then it got to the point where we realized that the superintendent came out publicly, gave his recommendation. So, I felt at that point, it was supportive for the board to get behind that decision and do what the superintendent is recommending based on the facts that they had. So, yeah, I had to face the situation. It's a very difficult situation, believe me. You believe in one thing, but then you still have to support what your superintendent said, what most of the other board members said at that time.
I would agree with that as well. Definitely, most importantly, a team player. And it is, if our decision comes as a team, so it's supporting the rest of your teammates and obviously supporting your superintendent.
Here's one for you, Beth. What are your educational priorities for the district relating and how do you relate them to the superintendent? What are your educational priorities for the school district relating them to the superintendent?
I don't have any yet. I'm sure they'll be coming. Getting to know the schools. I just faced through half my expectations. Coming to a small school, I've just been so impressed already with the teachers that my children have had or have spoken with and have relationship with. It's obviously, we want to keep going and, you know, there's build from there. But it was already surpassed a lot of those expectations. I'm sure as I could learn more and do more workshops, there were things I would absolutely love to bring to the superintendent just to make the school district better.
Yeah, I would say priorities is obviously giving the students the best education possible out there, to give them the greatest opportunity that they possibly could have. One of the things that I thought was important with, that was brought up to us as a board, was bringing more students back in the district as far as special events started. Yeah, we had to bring in a few more staff members, but in the long run, I think it was best for the students, best for what we're trying to achieve here in the district.
Thank you. Chris, question for you. With the forum mentioned about a budget cuts, what is something you would prioritize not to be cut when that happens?
Programs. They just can't cut programs. And you've got to keep with, with the staff we have on hand, I think, again, that would be against the cuts of any staff.
I would agree with that. I never wanted to come to a point where we're trying to choose between programs that are athletic programs or music programs to all needed.
Beth, here's one. How do you feel about allowing areas such as shared decision-making and volunteering in the classroom? Again, how do you give about allowing in areas such as shared decision-making and volunteering in the classroom?
Me and parents, for sure.
Out, you know, retired teachers that have, where their children are gone, you know, it's.
I love the idea of having parents be part of the classroom, being involved, getting to know the rest of the students, getting to know the teacher. Shared decisions, I don't, I mean, parents will be making all the decisions in that way. But, or retired teachers coming back and helping in different programs and being part of them, I think that's very important.
Yeah, I think some of the programs and boards and committees, I guess would be the proper term, that we have a place now, our shared decision-making committees. I agree with Beth that I'm 100% in favor of getting parental involvement, getting volunteers, retirees to help out on certain things within the community and within, is a joint kind of thing with the school district. So, yeah, I'm in favor of transparency, so to speak, and other opinions as well.
Thank you. Chris, here's a question. Do you support the district's proposed school budget? And if not, how are you expressing this? No, clearly. Do you support the district's proposed school budget? And how are you getting this out to the public to understand what the budget is?
The answer, the answer is support the current budget committee with a couple of board members. And this is our proposal in conjunction from listening to superintendent and the business official. And I think we, we as a board, did a great job getting the information. Our business administrator does a presentation, she should actually start certain X budget like immediately once this other budget passes or goes up the mode. And then it's, it's a year-long process. And during that year-long process, she makes presentations during the board meetings to the public. So, again, it's, it's in this type of form, the board form, or it's in, and it's also recorded. So, and it's on our website as well. So, there's a number of opportunities for that to get out.
When it comes to the budget, that's something before I made decisions, I would like to learn more about and look forward to going to workshops for it and learning more specifics about the budget because I realize there's just parts that I don't understand yet. I have seen what has been sent to the public with online, from what I've seen, I do support that.
Thank you. This question for you, Beth. We hear a lot of people that complain that the school taxes is too much for their housing and they have to leave the area. Or they don't have children at all and they feel that they would need to pay for school taxes. How would you tell the public the need of public schools and the importance of it?
I, again, just from my opinion, I came from an area where there was no public education. I have a mother who, you know, she just went to school until she was 12 years old and so was I. We moved to the States so I can finish school. And it is a huge privilege. And I think this country does as well as it does because of things like a public education, because it's available to every child. And where, those are, that's our future. These students are our future of this country.
Thank you, Chris. Yeah, that was a tough one. Well, I mean, from your experience, it says a lot. I mean, but more than you say, public education is just so important for the needs. And I don't have any kids in school now, I'm pregnant. And we were blessed that we had such a great experience here at Wilson. And great teachers and staff members. It's one of those things, again, Wilson is a small district. They, they stay engaged with those people. It's, yeah, it can be tough to explain to people that, yeah, your tax is going up a little bit more, but it's, you know, it's for the future of the kids that are here now. It's amazing, again, how successful so many of our students have been because we do have such a good school district and we've given these kids the opportunity to succeed. So, you try to explain that to them, explain that how successful a lot of these kids are because of the education they've been given. That you hope that, you can convert somebody. Yes, conversion is hard. Yes, conversions are.
Are there any more questions? I want to say I'd never hit, I'd never hit a fire in my house, but I sure appreciate that I volunteered for a company in my neighborhood.
So since we have no more questions, then.
No questions. Do we have to write it down or can we just say some? No, you can, we had to get written down because we had to ask. Can we get a question?
We just had a short break before we get more questions. Chris, the question will be for you. What is your viewpoint on transparency?
My viewpoint on transparency, I think it's a very important ideal to live by. You should, especially as a board, you have to discuss the things that are important for the public in the public sector. There's obviously certain things you can't discuss in the public sector, such as personnel matters or it's individual student matters and so forth. But overall, yeah, it's, transparency is very important. And it goes along with getting the proper information out to the public. And you hopefully stop these possible false rumors or false news that goes around.
I think transparency is a key element of policy. I think you're honest with the public and you are being transparent.
Thank you. Since we have no more questions. Let me, to close, let me have set the stuff for the closing, closing statements. Thank you for tuning into the league for the help with this evening's candidates forum. Let's show the candidates that we appreciate their participation this evening with a round of applause. We started with Chris for his closing statement. Let us start with Beth with her closing statement.
Okay, so I'll have my opening. But I look forward to learning more about how I can help the community, how I can help these students and also for the school district. I look forward to being more involved. I look forward to being a voice for those students and the other parents in the school district along with the staff in the school, in the schools. I am, I think, a quick learner, fast to my feet. And I just look forward to using those skills along with the great school boards already.
Great. I'd like to just kind of finish up by saying I'm honored to be a member of this board for the last thirteen years. I look forward to the next three. And we've got outstanding board members. Looking forward to Beth being on the board with us. A little sign note to say how about this school district. And I keep talking about the great staff and the administrators. My son came here, we adopted Columbia, and English was a second language. And he didn't know a word of English. Day one, he was introduced into the classroom. And we've gotten nothing but positive support from the staff, the teachers, the administrators, other parents. And a lot of you probably know Beth's husband was my son's soccer coach throughout all of all its JV and varsity years. And I had to say, one of his favorite teachers, the bottom in social studies as well. I, again, we were just grateful and this is my way of finally giving something back to the community, sir.
Wonderful, thank you. Of course, you all remember to vote in the school board election on May twenty first and they're supposed to do the same during the candidate form. We found you on the Wilson School Board YouTube channel. I also encourage you to vote in primary on June twenty fifth, early voting from June fifteen through June twenty third. In the general election on November fifth, with early voting from October twenty sixth to November thirty. The lead. Do you mind taking two more questions? Sorry, you want this?
No, that's fine. Any tough ones?
Yeah. So I'll go to, I guess, Chris with a question. What do you, what would you do to personally connect with the student body? What would you do to personally connect with the student body?
As a board member, again, I think you would attend various sports, sporting events. You try to talk to students, get to know them. Amo is a member of, one of our official board members this year. So she was actively involved. Just, I guess traditionally, how I get to know a lot of these kids is through friends of my son, through just seeing them out on the courts or on the field playing and talking to them. But again, we're such a small community.
Yeah, I already feel like I'm everywhere. We're in a lot of sports, a lot of sporting games. And I just, my husband coaching them or my kids in the sports. But it's my kids' friends that are also in sports. Even love coming and seeing all the plays that the schools do, seeing the music programs that they do in elementary school. My children are also in those. I absolutely love being involved and seeing everything the school does in the community. So that would just be, that's an easy one to.
Wonderful. Beth, here's one for you. And this is coming from a student's perspective. Bullying is a prevalent issue throughout the school districts, also in Wilson. As a board member, what, how would you recommend that we combat this issue?
I think one of the part of bullying is communication, especially in all those tough ages in high school and middle school. A lot of times with teaching them how to communicate, how to speak to each other. I have worked with a lot of, not a lot, but quite a few of the counselors in and in the school district. And I do think they're amazing, but any given them the resources of knowing how to handle the situations or sometimes it's just communicating.
Thank you, Chris. Yeah, I think it's a very important topic. And I think this school district keeps it high on radar as far as they're concerned. I would refer students to reach out to staff members, talk to them. Get off social media or try to avoid social media because we see that probably it's the biggest forum used to bully a lot of the kids. When I was going to school, it was one on one. Now, you get on social media and that's how a lot of these false rumors go around and false news. But again, I would encourage any student that's facing bullying or their parents that their kids are facing bullying is to reach right out to the school. And I know that the school district is a zero tolerance as far as.
On that same point, with bullying or whatever happens, is, would you as a board member look to have a student liaison with staff, faculty, so that they all understand what the issues are?
I think they do, do a pretty good outreach to the kids as right now as far as the bullying. But, yeah, I think we're always open to any ideas or any type of solutions to the bullying issues.
I do think a lot of it comes first to the staff when we first hear about it. There's a fine line there with trust. And I think a lot of those students come to teachers or coaches with that trust of trying to find a solution or trying to get out of a hole in time into with bullying or so getting to the devil's hand in hand. And it's important to have the staff ready for that.
Thank you again. Would you like to add anything to your closing statement after these last two questions?
No, I'm good. I think Beth is going to do a great job. Looking forward to her being part of our board. Looking forward to the next three years.
Well, thank you very much, Wilson. Thank you very much, Wilson School District, for allowing me to be allowed here and wishing you all the best of luck for this year.
Thank you, thank you.